Okay, good evening. Today is, I have to look, September 22nd, 2016. And we're here at the district office and this is the Hyde Park School District Board of Education meeting. At this time, can I have a motion to... Oh, wait. At this time, can I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters of personnel?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. We're now in executive session. At this time, may I have a motion to return to public session, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oops, sorry. Okay. Thank you. Let me just get to the right spot. At this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no modifications to the agenda tonight. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Well, that brings us... At what point do you want to leave that?
Superintendent's report?
Okay, so we do pride first?
Yeah.
All right. This time, we'll have pride. James, do you got any pride first from?
Yeah. So I'd like to start off by saying this was a fantastic week, all this past week before homecoming. Participating in Spirit Days was definitely a lot of fun and I could definitely see much more participation this year than last year. And the pep rally that happened on Friday was a big success and it was very smooth from my perspective. And a great way to top off the entire week basically was the varsity football game, which we won for our homecoming. And it was a lot of fun to be there. And it seems like all our sports are going at an upwards growth and school pride can be easily seen amongst my peers at least. So it's been a good week.
Great, thanks.
Great. Can I just make one comment? Because your principal made a point of telling me how orderly and how well the spirit and the... that event went and how well behaved the students were, so good job. Any other pride that anybody got?
Homecoming was the biggie.
Okay.
Oh, we ought to mention the girls soccer won a game this week. They're on the upswing. They won nothing. They beat sorgeties, I believe, the final score was.
My wife's brother-in-law is the coach there.
There you go, Doug. Take a bow.
Yeah, well, I'll have to get after him.
Maybe he's giving him advice.
That brings us to the superintendent's report.
I'm just gonna go straight at this. We have had an event in our... that affects our entire community. On September 20th, 2016, at approximately 8:00 a.m., the Town of Hyde Park Police Department and the New York State Police executed a search warrant at 567 Grand Avenue in the town of Newburgh in relation to a joint investigation into the theft from the Hyde Park Central School District. Arrested were Amy McCardle-Rausenberger, who is the Hyde Park Central School District Athletic Director, Director of Athletics, Health and Physical Education, and her husband Scott Rausenberger. Both individuals were charged with grand larceny second degree, a Class C felony. So as background, the statement for the district. In July of 2016, the central office staff for the Hyde Park Central School District was restructured. We reduced the number of assistant superintendents and reallocated areas of responsibilities. As a result of restructuring, I, the superintendent, took over the direct supervision of the Director of Athletics, Health and Physical Education, and as such, I began to review purchasing practices of that department. After initially signing off on purchase orders that were in the queue, spot checking along the way, I quickly determined to conduct an in-depth review of purchases made between June and July. This review led me to question the nature of and/or necessity of some of the items and, at the beginning of August, began an investigation. It became apparent that some items ordered had arrived in district, but we were unable to locate them. Consequently, my investigation became a top priority. By mid-August, I was consulting with our attorney and law enforcement. My first formal meeting with the Town of Hyde Park Police took place on September 7th, and the end result was the arrest made on September 20th. At this point, it continues to be an open investigation and a personnel matter. In the meantime, in order to respond to the oversight of district responsibilities for reporting and reviewing purchasing practices, we have done or are doing the following. We partnered with the police and both the local police and the New York State. We continue to partner in the investigation, providing all requests for documentation. Ongoing consultations with the district attorney. We instituted an additional layer of approval for all purchases made by our administrators. We notified New York State insurance reciprocal of a potential claim. We notified our auditors of the incident and provided them with a copy of the press release provided by the Hyde Park Police. We are scheduling special meetings for both our audit and policy committees. We are reviewing all district purchasing policies and practices with all individuals who have purchasing rights and responsibilities. This is a top investigative priority for the district and we will report and share information publicly only to the degree to which it does not compromise the status of the open police investigation. Our highest responsibility is to care for and educate our students, and that will remain at the forefront of our focus for each and every day.
Any other items? Any other items on the superintendent?
No.
Nope? Okay. Well, that brings us to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We're now in public participation. If anybody would like to address the board, please step to the right.
Good evening. Kevin Sheehan, Six Beat Art Place. Doing something a little unusual for me. I'm speaking from a script because I'm so livid, not at any of you, that I don't trust myself to stay on message. Yesterday's news was most distressing, actually infuriating. And while I recognize that there's a presumption of innocence until proven guilty in a court of law, I have to say at the outset that there is no place in our community for this type of behavior. To the board, all of the district employees and students, I'm sorry that this occurred. We have been blissfully out of the papers for a number of years, allowing us to focus on improving our performance and delivering education without an outrageous distractions from... such as just what had occurred. I thought that the arrest of one administrator in my lifetime, 14 years or so ago, remember, was enough. Oh, I offer a few comments. First, we can and should be angry at the individuals who were charged with the crime. But make no mistake, what occurred is solely the responsibility of the people that perpetrated the crime. Dr. Reitcheck is to be congratulated for either detecting and/or following up on what transpired and for contacting law enforcement. From our PR point of view, this is your absolute nightmare. But to sweep it under the rug and get the employee to resign, which happens so often in cases like this and a lot of other places, it does a disservice to everyone except the perpetrator. So the difficult and heartbreaking but absolutely brave and correct choice to get law enforcement involved is to be congratulated. So while some in the community may bemoan that this even happened, and they should, their anger should be directed at the accused and we should be content knowing that our superintendent dealt with the issue head-on. An employer isn't responsible for what an employee decides to do individually when it comes to bad behavior, but the employer is responsible for how they respond to and deal with it when it becomes known. Second, to all district employees, I'm confident that most, I'll say 99% of you, not in 100%, given the events of the other day, are honest and ethical. But know this, if you are in that 1%, think long and hard about ever doing something that will crush you and the district and our community dearly. You have no place in Hyde Park. A good rule of thumb is, if what I'm doing or about to do is gonna make the front page of the paper, and if so, will it be good news and not embarrassing? If the answer is no, then I think you know how you should respond. Finally, to the community, I offer this. Having been on the Board of Education, I can assure you that probably nothing would make the superintendent and board happier than the immediate resignation of Ms. McCardle-Rausenberger. That would be a simple and elegant solution, but that can only come from her. Any other employment action has to be within the confines of New York State education law and the due process rights it confers. So be patient. Your anger and frustration, while legitimate, belongs with state law and not those that are here who are sworn to uphold it, even the parts we don't like. You've heard about the need for tenure reform? If you agree, you'll need to talk to Senator Serino and Assemblymember Barrett about that. Tenure was intended to give due process rights to teachers and administrators to ensure academic freedom and to ensure nepotism and other shady reasons were not to be used to discipline or fire employees. But it certainly should not be used to protect employment rights when criminal activity against students, coworkers, or the school district itself is involved. That's my prepared statement. On that, I will also, on a happier note, I wanted to thank you all very much for the nomination for my school board service, Mid-Hudson School Study Council next month. And I was kind of hoping just to come here and have to tell you that, but yesterday that all just kind of blew up. So thank you again. It's an incredible honor and I appreciate your nomination of me. I think it was great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anybody else like to address the board? Okay. May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And bring this to board discussion, goal setting. Just for the purpose of the community, we did look at what it would cost for a custom board retreat for creating effective board goals. There's a basically two options, a full day, which I wouldn't recommend, and a half day. The half day costs $1,500 plus travel expenses. Speaking personally, I would like to do this and I would like to create board goals tonight based on our last year's board goals, have this, depending on how soon we can have it, and then kind of reappraise what the board goals are based on what we learned. That doesn't mean that we're gonna do this just because I think it's a good idea, so I'd like to hear feedback from everybody on, first, on whether or not this is something you want to do and if it's an acceptable cost. We have money, enough money in the board budget to handle this. So I mean, it's not a money issue as such, but I don't want to have this if there's half the group doesn't really want to do it. So if I could get some comments. I know, Perry, you always have a comment. Come on.
Well, I'm not sure whether I have a strong opinion as to whether we should do it or not. Do the professional development for board goals, if that's the right, you know, if that's the right source. That, I think we should, you know, have an open dialogue as to, you know, what everybody believes on that. And, you know, I think that we could be more successful in our board goal setting. And actually, one of the questions I have is, are we doing board goals? Are we doing district goals?
Well, yeah, we're actually doing district goals.
Okay, okay.
Within which there is a board goal line.
Compenor, sure, yeah.
And I was always misquoted. I was always saying, oh, we're gonna do board goals. It's really...
We're doing district goals.
District goals, yes.
Okay. Of which we can have a set of board goals as well.
Yeah.
That support.
Correct.
You know, there's a hierarchy in the goal setting, so just for that clarification. But to me, I think at this point, we muddle through it with the expertise that we have on our own, and I think we should then perhaps have some dialogue that maybe between now and next summer, we have... look at getting some professional development on board goals and on goal development. And I'm not sure. I mean, it's, you know, it's something that... my feeling is, everybody's got an opinion on developing board goals, and I'm not sure whether New York School Board Association has a captive control on that.
Yeah, I would agree that each district is different.
Yeah.
So it's very difficult to have a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah.
Presentation. But the one I did, the webinar that I did, there was a lot of good stuff in there.
It was. You're talking about the webinar that...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It was good. It was maybe a little lengthy a time and I won't say I didn't doze off once or twice, but yeah, I think there's a lot, lot good there and I've, you know, I printed the notes and referred to them.
Okay.
Or will refer to them today.
Anybody else?
I would have a question. We have a set of goals.
Yeah.
Today, right?
Well, it's from last year, yeah.
Right, but, I mean, are they annual goals that we have to redo every year or are these still...
Well, for instance, if you look at that, there's one goal that we will increase graduation rate by three years from now. So, yeah, you can have ones that are multi-year.
Reading through these, they seem like they're still applicable. Do we have to throw them all out?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. My take on that was, most of them are still applicable. Some need to be changed. We do that and then we discuss whether or not we're gonna have this. I really didn't want to wait until next year, but that's fine with me too, if that's what everybody wants to do.
Well, my only thought is that we want to develop... I think we... it's appropriate first to develop new goals.
Right.
My goal, one of the goals might be that we do a professional development between now and this time next year when we set our goals, so that we were all a little more educated on our goal setting.
Okay, well, yeah, more or less, that's what I would suggest then, but if we did it sooner, we could, if we learned something, we could adjust these goals.
Whenever our slow time is.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I'd like to do it sooner than later. I think there are some issues that are still carrying over from last year, one of which is, you know, I sit back, sit here now looking back a year ago on the discussions about the common core situation, and I don't think there's been any progress made in clarification, although the state did issue upgrades yesterday, but, you know, it's gonna take us a while to figure out what the changes are and what's required and to review those things.
Right.
But I think, you know, those are areas that need to be addressed as soon as possible. And having listened to part of the webinar, I think they do offer some consistent suggestions on the difference between goals and other types of...
Objectives.
What was the other word?
Objectives.
Objectives, yeah. That made sense to me in being able to clarify what we're doing here. So I'd like to see this. I'd support the professional development and as soon as possible, and if it's done with enough time remaining, I would then also accept the review of the goals as we generate now in review with the knowledge we had to see what updates and improvements we could make.
All right, well, we, at least I don't think we did. Did we get any idea of the timeframe we could, they could provide? Is there a waiting list? Is there any?
They did not respond.
Okay. All right, well, we'd have to find out, you know, I mean, maybe it's like they can't do it until April or something like that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, any... anybody else want to...
Yeah. I mean, I've been on the board for several years now and we do this every year. And I'm gonna throw this out just to start a conversation. I haven't seen that it really makes much of a difference to what we do or how we do it. And especially now that we just finished a coherency plan last year and that plan is in place and it is detailed and long-term as well as short-term and really appears to be directed at aligning all of our resources towards achieving higher improvement and improving the school district. And I, the other... So based on the fact that we have that coherency document, I don't know what we can add to board goals that would improve the district or improve our operations. Furthermore, we had board goals last year. We reviewed them once. We haven't actually gone over whether we were successful or not. And the other point is that there's never any penalties or any dire consequences in the event that we don't meet our goals. So, I mean, over my span on the district, I've probably spent six or seven hours total talking about or thinking about goals and I have strong questions about the value of the process. It's not my intention to attack anybody's process or procedure or philosophy on the topic. I'm simply saying that I haven't seen that much value in the process.
Well, I would point out that due to the goals that we set, the superintendent set objectives for the year and laid them out in a calendar order so that they could be presented, and in fact, they were. So in that case, I think things about what our goals are, what the district goals are in terms of the community are important, which doesn't necessarily affect academics or the coherence and strategic plan. I personally think it could be shorter and the reason I wanted this workshop was to have a process to make this easier to do and not have this discussion every, every year on where are we, when can we do it? And then we get to August when people are on vacation or July and August and we want to look at goals and, you know, it's like, oh, well, I'm going to Cape Cod next week and, you know, I can't really look at this. And, you know, I would rather have a process that in that area after the budget vote but before the end of school, that we could do it then for next, the following year. But that's only my thoughts. Anybody else?
Yeah. Goals are only as good as we make them. And I do think we need to have goals. And if we're making goals that are just there for goals and have no meaning, then we are gonna let these slide under the rug. So I do think we need to have some kind of structure and some teaching on how to make effective goals that may have meaning for this school district. I mean, we have a motto right behind us and I bet you that 90% will not be able to recite it. We need to have a meaning in behind it. And we have, the DLT is meeting again. We have a strategic plan that we're starting to work, but it's in very early stages. And we have to have some very strategic goals that we're gonna be looking for, for each step of the way. Though I don't know, I don't think we're there yet to set those goals. Because after, I only got to be with the teachers for one hour on Wednesday. But I think we need to put meaningful goals that we take pride in and that we are checking on. If these goals that we make have no meaning to us, then they're kind of worthless.
Right, but they should be what our goals for the district are.
Yes.
You know?
But I do think we need some kind of training to say, how do we take goals that are meaningful, measurable?
Right. You don't have to convince me. Well, if anybody else hasn't said a word yet, Mike, you got any other comment? How about we do this? Let's go through the current goals, see if they still apply, and either add one or two or if you have other ones. Do that tonight and I'll ask the district if we can get a timeframe on when this can be done. And then hopefully by next meeting, we'll know. Although I know Debbie has asked and she hasn't got a reply, no, so.
If I could make one comment too. Flawed or unflawed or what we learn about goals in the future, setting better, more streamlined or narrowing them down, I just wanted to comment that what has been helpful for the administrative team is that we actually very closely look at all of these goals and that's how we mapped out in the past couple of years, the board agendas and what presentations we make. So whether or not these are true sense of measurable goals, they have been an effective tool for planning communication, for planning on, for reporting on progress. And, you know, so when we go from here and we take that agenda planner and we, when we see that we want to give two updates on technology plan or the building condition survey, we have used this as a roadmap. And so again, maybe it's not measurable, but we, it has been a useful tool for knowing what the board is interested in learning about and a roadmap for how we report back to the board. So if nothing else, it's been an effective roadmap for us to communicate with the board and therefore the public on the progress in these areas. And it, you know, you'll see, we did review the goals at one point. We generally have about a 90 to 95% success rate because we follow the roadmap that is determined. So I hope that helps navigate that, you know, we... It sounds like there's pretty much consensus, we'll learn about some goals and maybe look at it differently, but for right now, it's working as, it's a helpful map.
Well, that's a helpful statement for me. You know, if it's useful to the administration, then it's a useful exercise overall. I would like to suggest that we put a 20-minute limit on this discussion and if we're not complete, then we come back and hit it again at the next meeting. I find that if we spend too much time on, too much time, I can't think of the right word, but too much time on goals, by the time we get to the end, we're willing to say yes to anything just to get done with it.
Actually, I'm kind of opposed to putting a time limit on, but I think we can do this in 20 minutes. If we, if we all agree that we're gonna use this as a, the current goals as a format, then I think we're all right.
Then let's do it.
Let's do it. Okay. So let's start with academics. And I'm gonna read you, we, oh, it's kind of up there, but a little hard to see. Okay. Receive annual updates regarding the common core outcomes that have been integrated into instructional practice. I mean, with the way things are changing, I think that's a no-brainer. We ought to keep that one in, all right?
It's a new goal. They changed 60% of just the English language articles.
And considering the fact that the coherence plan... And considering the fact that coherence planning is in its infant stages and is changing and being updated, I think the second one, receive monthly updates on the new planning stage. I have a problem with number three on this.
Can we go back to number two?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
We don't always meet monthly. So to say it monthly, I would rather we say within three weeks of the, of the last meeting. So
Oh, okay.
Because there's times last year we had nothing.
Yes, yes, that's good.
Because we hadn't met. But if we give three weeks, it means that we had a meeting on Wednesday. We're not ready on Thursday. But so within three weeks of a full strategic planning meeting.
I'd like to strike the words formerly called strategic planning.
Yeah, no, we don't, yeah.
So that goal would read, receive monthly, actually receive?
Well, let's say receive updates, receive updates.
Receive timely updates on the new
Timely updates from. Yeah, I don't know.
Updates on the coherency planning.
Based on the meetings. Yeah, I don't know how you want to word that.
Timely would do. I mean, you know, it's been effective that we're reporting as needed. So timely, and I think there's enough board members on and Aviva and myself who sit on that, that, you know, we'll be sure timely will work.
Receive timely updates.
On the coherency planning process.
You know, that's not quite a SMART goal, but it's almost.
It's not, well, the problem is measurable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe we put something in not to exceed a two-month span or a one-month span.
I think it's good enough as is. Let's not overthink it.
How many, how many planning meetings? Is it going to be every month or?
We're toggling back and forth between an instructional and then the full team.
How about timely updates, no less than six occurrences during the school year, some number. Pick a number. Is that good?
Yes.
All right. The third one is, I have a problem with, because we're in the business of following state regulations, which says we're going to have tests. So publishing an opt-out process, although it sounds like a good thing and the community may want it, it's not something the board should be promoting nor should the superintendent be promoting. So I have a problem with that one.
I would think though we want to assure that the necessary information for the public to form an informed decision should be available somewhere on the website. You can't, you know.
Well, if you go down in the, in the community, it says have a public meeting to fully discuss and understand the community's view and objectives on the opt-out movement as it relates to our parents. I think that's a good one. But I don't think we should be advocating that here's how you opt out. That's my opinion.
I don't think publishing the process is advocating. I think it simply makes it clear to those who would want to follow that process.
I think if I could help out here, because Aviva and I spent a lot of time looking at this, knowing that this is controversial. It puts the board and the superintendent's role, I'm not allowed to encourage. But what we came up with, if you will, and we're pretty much, Aviva's done a lot of work on this already. If we could say, we had the community forum, we had three or four people that were, you know, so that, but if we could word it to provide test refusal information to families in inadequate time, I don't.
All right. So you mean?
Just simply.
Get rid of publish opt-out process and replace it with provide?
Or you could say publish, but publish sounds like we're the authors of it. And we're not going to be the publishers of this. But we've gathered information from the PTA, from New York State. And I think we could, what we could all live with is provide test refusal information to families. But, you know, prior, prior to the testing cycle.
Do you have to be specific on what type of testing or, I mean, because?
The only testing, the only, the only tests where there is a test refusal option is the New York State test.
So should you say New York State?
We could do that. Provide test refusal.
New York State.
Provide information regarding New York State test refusals or wordsmith that.
I only have one concern is, is that this an academic goal? Or is this something that should be in the community? Because it's really not measuring academics.
Right.
It's the absence of. So really, is it an academic goal?
I feel more comfortable with it being a community goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I am happy with moving that. And
We found a good Q and A. We're going to provide the PTA position statement and a sample letter.
But I think we should state that our goal, our goal as a district is to have 100% participation in the testing. Make it clear that, yes, there is an option to opt out of the test, but that's not something we're recommending.
I can't.
At least I'm not recommending.
I'll lose my license if I recommend that.
Okay. As long as we make that clear, then I'm okay.
Well, you're going to leave that under community also?
You were going to move it to
Board would like, I understand moving the informational piece of it to community. But the piece where the board supports 100% participation or encourages 100%?
No, I don't think that's necessary to put in as a goal. I just wanted to make my
Understand.
My stand completely obvious that there are tests and we're supposed to administer them and kids are supposed to take them. And I understand that people aid don't think they're appropriate or they're, whatever the reason. And they have their own good reason. And if it's valid for their family, then that's fine. But I just said that our goal as a district is to administer the tests to all children.
I'd just like to have somewhere a place where families that are on the fence or families that are getting information from other people could get input as to what is the validity or what is, what is the purpose of this test? What information is gleaned from it? And get rid of some of the connotations that are maybe, you know, unfortunate in the sense, you know, that it's a significant impact or non-impact at this time on the school rating, the teacher, AP PRs, that kind of stuff. That information is, you know, rather than having releases in the press and interpretations by people in the press, you know, our, our understanding of the significance in our district of the tests and why we like, why we want. Not just say we want to have them taken. We want, we want them to understand why it is we want them. There are some, you know, there are reasonable reasons why we'd like to take the test.
Okay.
We'd like to get a benchmark in some areas and we'd like to
Okay. Let's, let's move on and we'll readdress the wording, actual wording when we get to community. Number four is one that we put in is a long-range goal. It's still valid, so I would, unless you want to up the
I think, you know, as we go, we might want to, you know, in this upcoming years, where our target is, indicate if, what, what change in this occurred in the first year? Did we go from 78 to 75 or 72 to 74?
We're at 84%.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've already met that goal. I don't know, that was my next question, whether or not you wanted to up that number to say 80% in case, because you never know what cohort is going to change. It could be, it could be a swing.
Eighty-five, but the four-year cohort, was that at eighty-five?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's safe to say 80 and we're
Eighty-four in August.
Well, we're not trying to be safe here. We're trying to set a goal. We'd like to, to
Right.
To be reasonable and significant.
I think what I'm saying, I think 75 is a low ball. I think we can up that.
Yeah, understand. That's what I'm saying. But to go to 80 when we hit 84 last time is, you know.
Well, it's, it's not public yet because there's always a lag year. So our graduation rate for August was 84. But what we're going to look at in the 17, in the 16, 17 year is not this past, it's the year prior. So it takes a couple of years for the public school report card to maybe show that 84.
And didn't graduation requirements change? There were some things that changed just this spring that we were, some kids were allowed to graduate?
The, we had about two more.
A little safety net, couple of points here and there for a few students.
Right. Before we try to set this, do we have the, this, this data for the last five or 10 years? Could we see that information before we set this goal? Because I'd like to see what the trend is.
I can tell you the trend was up.
Well, I know it's up, but is it up by 3% a year or 7.5% a year?
Well, it was down under, under 70 at one point.
Well, why don't we wait until
When we put the goal in, I thought it was 72%. We raised it three.
So I'd like to postpone that for the next meeting.
That's fine. Board operations, depending on what we learn on this, the board goals part, the board retreat, I guess.
I think at this point, we would like to investigate the possibility of having a board retreat. And then if that turns to be feasible and supported, then we change that goal to having one.
That's fine.
I think we should conduct a board retreat regardless of whether it's on goal setting or some other topic. I think there's a lot of value in a board retreat.
That's fine with me also. In the past, we've had trouble with vacation, with people, with locations, where we're going to go. But that's fine with me. I mean.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we should
Those are procedural issues we need to solve.
Right.
That becomes our goal to solve those procedural issues. Have one.
All right. So say it again, Dan. You want to investigate?
We would like to investigate the, a board retreat on setting goals or alternative professional development that the board could be improved by.
Sounds good. You got that?
Are we going to leave out by the end of December?
Yes, yes. We're going to leave out by the end of September.
It's no longer, no longer a SMART goal that way.
All right.
Well, be by the end of the academic year.
I'm not sure we, oh, we can, we should be able to find out by the end of December.
Why don't we simplify and simply say, conduct a board retreat by the end of the academic year?
Yep.
Works for me. Bring this down to budget. Obviously, the one that's there, create a budget to maintain as many programs as possible, given the budget cap. Any spending reduction should be distributed with equity. Focus more closely on actual spending instead of projected rollover numbers, which we actually did this year. So maybe we really don't need to put that in because that's now part of the process, right?
Yeah.
I don't see any, any reason to change that goal at all.
I was going to say, we still have more work to do. So
Okay.
Maybe next year we can, you know, leave off the second part, but we still have more work to do. So it might be nice to say we're going to do the work.
Could I chime in?
Yeah.
It should be the tax cap, not the budget cap. The budget itself, there is no cap. The cap is on the tax.
Given the tax cap, that's correct. That's right. It sounds nice though if we had a cap on our budget, though. I know people out in video land would love that.
Depends on who imposes it.
Okay. Bring this down to community. I would like to, number one, which says have a public meeting to fully discuss and understand the community view and view, and objectives of the opt-out movement as it relates to our parents. And that was not really successful.
Yeah, we should strike that.
Because not many people came.
We should strike that.
Yeah. So I, that's obviously not an effective way to get the message out because we only had a few families come. Conducting an exit poll, we've already kind of discussed and said, that doesn't really seem helpful.
I wasn't here for that discussion. I think that we're giving up our opportunity to collect information that we otherwise don't have opportunity to get. If existing questions aren't helpful, then let's find some questions that are. But this is our one opportunity to get feedback. And I think we're foolish to, to throw that opportunity away.
Yeah, because, you know, I think we need to tailor the question to be specific to either the process that the budget vote, the budget was developed in terms of relating to the community, understanding it, and the actual boundaries that were established by that budget. At the time we're taking the exit poll, we've got the budget right in front of them. They're voting on that budget. They're looking at numbers. They're looking at the impact on their, their income and their opportunity, their way to pay and what they're getting for it. So I think we get, try and focus on some of the specifics of that to see not only how, how did we meet their boundaries? Did we stretch them a little? And it might be able to establish boundaries in terms of numbers for the upcoming year.
I'm happy to leave it in as long as, Steve, you, you be the lead on that. And whoever else wants to do it, and you'll review what we have and bring us back a list, you know, what the new exit poll looks like.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Three was make use of social media to interact with the community.
I'd like to strike that.
Yeah, we have the Facebook page. I'm not sure how much interaction. So I'm, I'm okay with striking that also. Are there any, any other new ones? Anybody have anything else that they want to see in community? Other than the one we're moving down, right? We're moving down the reworded number three from academics. Correct?
So I read that one the following way. In a timely manner, provide information to families about the process of test refusal in regards to New York State standardized testing.
Works for me. Thank you, Steve. That brings us to facilities. Number one is receive an update on the building condition survey and the five-year capital plan for the purposes of identifying future facilities needs. Oh, this doesn't read right. Future facilities needs master facilities planned by, oh. Needs period, no period in there. Master facilities planned by June of 2016. We did get a masters.
But you're not going to have a building condition survey for another five years.
Right. Well, you know, what's interesting about this one is that we have the focus of the broader district leadership team, the instructional team is going to continue to meet and map out, you know, how we're going to implement the instructional academic piece. And then when the broader team meets, the instructional team will give an update on where we are rolling out our instructional plan. But we're going to begin the conversation of facilities. So if you see the district calendar, the district leadership team, the coherence planning team is going to meet, and it says DLT slash facilities. So I think we have four or five meetings scheduled this year. We're front-loading the year so that we, we're really going to focus on facilities as well. So the concept of reporting on the DLT will cover facilities. So when we give those reports after the coherence planning, you'll get the report on the facility. So the first meeting is next week. We're going to give We're gonna give a review and a refresher of the coherence plan. We're going to update where we are in, um, the implementation process of that plan. And then the second portion is the first discussion of facilities planning. So Elliot's gonna give the overview of the building condition survey. And we're gonna start the process of talking about, um, uh, the next capital project with the, uh, understanding that, um, it will be a conversation that includes where applicable, the instructional foundation for planning. So obviously roofs might not have an instructional component, or maybe they will. Maybe, you know, maybe we want some of our students to, you know, follow the progress. We know that the building condition survey mentioned science labs. And so what do we think, uh, what does the district leadership think, think of, um, laying out science labs or, uh, in light of, you know, focus on collaboration and, uh, critical thinking?
But it might be nice to say, at the end of the year, they come with a recommendation for facilities as, as a formal presentation.
That would be then a good place to word a goal, right here for that. That would be great.
I would like also suggest that sometime, and I, I, I hope I'm not gonna blow the front-end loading of these discussions. But in the February, March timeframe, I'd like the, a significant wrap-up in a sense of the capital improvement plan at Havelin in the heating systems. It's been an ongoing process for three years, it's now quote-unquote completed, or will be completed. We need to map that update in the building and, and for that school with the success of what we intended to do, which was to eliminate the heating outages, make sure all of the facilities within the building are usable for our students on a day-to-day basis, not being forced to shuffle people around and stuff. We made judgments, we made changes, we didn't do everything that was suggested. But I'd like to know that the things we did do accomplished what we needed to do, which was to provide that facility as a twenty-four-seven facility for our kids in school.
So that would be like a secondary, a second goal. One is for the DLT to give a present.
Well, it, it, depending on the outcome of that, it might have an impact on the next capital budget plan. If, if there's gaps or things that need to be done, or things that reflect on, uh, Violet Avenue or, uh, the other historic buildings that we are not considering right now, we need to, to, to understand that. You know, cause we've done one building, uh, I've been told a couple of things that, most of the things that were done were related to the additions to the building rather than building itself, that the building itself was, uh, minimally updated to solve the problems. But I, 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 without having a, uh, an update to that and saying that's true.
Should we say by April?
Well, I, I say I pick March or April, cause I figured that the balance of the heating system was over, yeah.
Right. Alright, by April, have a report.
But I wanna leave enough time for it to, to, if necessary, have an impact on the next capital budget.
Okay. So we're gonna have a report on the Havelin, uh, the efficiency and effectiveness of that Havelin heating upgrades by April of two thousand and seventeen. Do we still wanna do two formal presentations from Energy Educator?
I think that's, I think that's, I think we're already committed to that.
We're committed.
As part of the energy.
Contract, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave that one, that's good. Policy is the same, with, it's, uh, very difficult to keep up with, but process all NISBA, uh, policy updates as received. And we do already have a schedule of, um, meetings set up, so we'll do our best, there are like two a month, right?
Now, that's dealing with the policy updates being recommended by the Smoothwood Association.
And any other ones that might.
Now, we, you and I, I've had a discussion on something we feel needs to be done, we don't believe has been updated in the last five years that may be very, very relevant to what's going on right now. And it's a review of the policy purch- the policies dealing with purchasing and verifications.
Right, and there are a number of them, I think that, why don't we make that as a, a goal?
Well, any policy that hasn't been reviewed.
Right, but I think, um, given, given the, but given the circumstances, I think, uh, to re- the review of all policies of purchasing financial, uh, nature would be good to make sure that they're up to snuff.
I think we, we should make that a goal, to finish this before Christmas or sooner.
Before Christmas, before, uh, the end of December.
End of December, yeah.
Okay.
Christmas gift to the community.
Right, right. That works. Okay, we move to technology?
So that reads, review policies related to purchasing and financial controls by January.
By January, it's fine.
By the beginning of January?
Yeah, by the beginning.
We're, we're testing Debbie's, uh. Skills of rewriting things.
We moved quickly through facilities and I hesitate to go back, but, um, the goals there were to report on current status of HMS heating system by April. And Greer talked a lot about how facilities were gonna be discussed by the coherency planning and the DLT.
But then Jeff came up with a, where do you never go?
Yeah, that they would have, provide a formal recommendations to the board by the end of the year.
End of which year?
End of the school year.
Sixteen seventeen school year.
Okay. If it arrives then, we won't be able to take action on any of those items in the budget, right?
Well, they would all be, they, we're talking about a capital project, there would be a vote.
So it's only capital project?
Right.
Type, uh, facilities decisions, okay?
That's what I am.
Alright, and we move to technology and then we can, we're done. Receive two updates regarding how technology has been integrated into instructional practice, one in January and one in June. Emphasis on how the tech bond money will be sent. Now, we've sent some money and we have issued, or we are about to issue. It can stay the same, but I, I think we should mention, um, I guess we don't have to be that specific. I would, I would like to track how we're doing with the middle school, uh, as far as.
I, I think that, I think there's been some assumptions made about, uh, failure rates of the, the components we're handing out, loss rates and stuff like that. We may be able to start tracking those to make sure that we're not overestimating or underestimating it as we go, rather than waiting till we get into a, a financial crisis, cause we, we lost thirty percent of our crop, as it were.
So we could, we could keep the first one as is and then, um, do a second one of, uh, provide an update on the implementation of the one-to-one by January. The one-to-one initiative at Havelin by January.
We've given out so many, we've, the students have all been trained, uh, we've experienced the following issues with the, with the hardware.
Do we have any kind of academic goal based on the one-to-one? What the goal was that we were, why we were doing one-to-one? And is there something measurable we can make in the academics?
If, if it is, it'd better be a long-range role. I don't think you can measure the impact in the first year. I think maybe if, in the second year or third year, I mean, otherwise, um. I think they're gonna be struggling as to how effective they, they're gonna be using it. And I think they're gonna have problem, oh, I gotta, now I got a big display on the wall, and how am I gonna use that? I think, um, at least the teachers that I spoke with at the middle school, they were a little nervous about how they were gonna use those big screens, so.
The, the academic, there are academic goals embedded throughout the district technology plan. And they, they also had to mirror what you were putting in your smartphones. I, I can't rattle them off on the top of my head at this hour, but, um, the academic goals for the tech plan and the one-to-one, there are academic goals. Off the top of my head, um, I don't know if we've set them up to say, you know, we'll improve whatever by X amount of time. But, um, we'll make sure that, uh, in the first, in, in that report, we'll review the academic goals that are attached to the one-to-one initiative.
Okay.
I think we could also, uh, wanna measure the validation of the statement that with this implementation, we will be able to meet the state requirement, which has been delayed but is still forthcoming, of being able to provide state testing online.
The park test, they pushed that back to a long way.
Well, we're, we, we've got a lot of practice now, because we've been using them for the maps assessment. So we're ready.
So we have the first one, and we have.
Number two, did we, did, you met that one, right?
Yes, we did, that one's out.
So we can throw that one out?
Yeah.
That's the technology policies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Reviewing the policies.
I think we should review that on an annual basis.
Is that something the tech committee could do?
Yeah. So, okay.
You got a point, the technology does change rapidly, it's not a bad, bad eye.
But won't that be covered in the New York School Board Association updates?
No.
For the, for the, for the policies?
Well, we do, but, um, there may be.
Others we.
Other things that come up in terms of what technology we're using or what technology the.
Alright, then my question becomes, why, why would we focus just on technology? Or if there are things that come up during the school year that point to updates necessary in the policies?
I would, I would suggest.
What is the process for, for something to be reviewed, specific policy because of something that's new? It may not only be a technology. And are we setting a goal, saying when, when something triggers this start of this? How, how do we track the fact that we got to it within a timely fashion?
I can't answer your question, but technology changes so quickly that, um, I've read in several sources where they talk, they, they recommend that you review your technology practice policies annually. Furthermore, we've got a, a very large project running at HMS right now. And if we discover, um, issues that need to be addressed, I think it'd be a healthy thing to do to.
I, I, I agree, I'm just saying, but if, if that, there's gotta be some process that says in, in, in looking at how the technologies work in Havelin, we've come up with a problem here or something there that needs, requires an update in the policy. That's great, but I don't wanna limit that type of a process just to technology.
Oh, I don't think it's limiting, I think it's just, um, the policy goal is to review everything as it changes. And we do reverse things as, uh, other items occur during the school year that might need a look at.
That's my question, what is, what is the trigger for that, that something comes up?
Usually it's something, huh? Yes, yes, absolutely.
It can be either an administrator brings something to our attention because they've had new training on, on an issue, or it can be something triggered by NISBA. But it can be staff or, or law.
Alright, so, you know, what, I guess what I'm.
Well, I think that the process is in place now, both through what we do.
I hear it is, you know, I, I'm gonna extend it a little bit. I think, I'd like to be aware of the triggers that have occurred, when they occur, not when the policy is brought to me with an update, just so I'm aware of what's going on.
Well, you will be, because we changed the policy and you have to, you have to approve them.
I understand, but that may be three months after the trigger occurred, or four months after the trigger occurred. And now I'm being asked to review the policy change, cause I'm not on the policy committee, in a two-week process. Whereas if I'm made aware of, uh, that this has occurred, which is gonna trigger a review of certain policies, I can anticipate that and take a look at it myself and be, be more knowledgeable and more prepared to discuss it when it comes in. This, this is the concerns of an old man who has a large family.
I'm trying to visualize, uh, um, we have in the past had a.
Debbie keeps a.
Schedule of what we were doing, is that public or it can?
It can go to board members?
I can put it on the board.
Okay, we'll put that on board.
Thank you.
That'll give you a morally time, because as something comes up administratively or through NISBA, then, then it puts those policies ahead of whatever was in the queue numerically. And Debbie's got a beautiful spreadsheet on that.
But getting back to Steve and technology, um, actually, I do agree, because, uh, this is something new we're doing. We're just starting, we've made, um, policy decisions on how the technology is supposed to be used. Who's to say that we've got it correct, you know? I have no problem.
If I can add, from, from the notes of the, um, the webinar, under district goals set by the board, often in consultation with superintendent to provide direction for the district, maintain standards, target areas of need and improvement, or where changes to occur. It certainly fits in that definition.
Yeah. Alright, so we're gonna review.
Is that installable, will they print out the notes?
You got it? Okay.
Forty minutes.
Well, it's not too bad, double.
We're not done yet.
The last one's, uh, in reference to bring your own devices, and I'm not sure we're there yet, are we? Technology committee is, we're not encouraging people at the moment to bring their own devices, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably entirely enveloped in, in, uh, the technology policies that we're gonna review.
So we'll get rid of three.
Yeah.
And we're done.
So.
Twice what it was.
The two issues that I don't think were addressed at all.
Okay.
I'd like to track progress on the coherency plan. As I was reviewing it last night, there was a fairly detailed, uh, schedule there that included dates. And I don't know where some of those, uh, you know, what the progress or what the status is on those, so. I don't know where to, where to put that in the.
But that would be on the updates.
That would be in the, yeah, that's what I would say.
That, we'll, we'll cover that in the updates, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing that I'd like to, to address in goals is to, uh, have some sort of checkpoint on, uh, receiving updates as to how well the new administration structure is working.
Absolutely, absolutely. We already know it's working pretty good, unfortunately.
Internally, uh, we, we knew that was possibly coming up, so we, uh, we were thinking in terms of giving a December presentation on that. So if you wanted to write by early January, we know we're, we've already, uh, Viva, Linda and I have already started to talk about that and felt December would be a good time, if that's acceptable.
Any suggestions on where we put that?
Board operations, I don't know. Budget?
We saved a lot of money getting an assistant superintendent.
Nothing says we can't have another category if you, uh, but.
I think it's a budget item.
Alright.
You know, because if, if, if it's not working and we come back in December and say, wow, what a big mistake. We need, you know, money for another assistant superintendent, you need to adjust the budget, we'll need to know in time for a budget.
Oh, but if it's only budget, it's, you save money, you're done, that was your goal?
No.
Not really.
You've gotta meet the other criteria.
As a result of the, we did save money, but it wasn't, that wasn't the primary goal.
Well, right, so that's why it's not the budget. Budget part's easy, should be board slash administration operations?
Good enough.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is a goal, but we, uh, actually Greer and I were both, uh, lobbied by my, Maggie. I can never say her name.
Schimofenek.
For a possible end-of-year financial, um, uh, course or, um, for graduating students that, uh, tells them how to plan their life and how to use money and how to write a check.
Financial literacy, of course.
You know, financial, and I personally think it should be like a required thing, but I don't know how you fit that into a schedule now, for this year, anyway. But I would like us to think about, um, because I've done the funny money thing there, and those kids are unbelievable. They spend money on stuff and they don't give it a thought about, you know, food and, and, oh, I can afford a big car, you know?
I, I, I like the way you're thinking. I would like to see us integrate, um, household. Household finance education into our curriculum. Starting in middle school.
Well, we have something in middle school, but by the time they get to be seniors, forget it, they've forgotten all that stuff. I want it at the end.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're talking about something that can happen in a month or two or even a year, but I'd like to see us integrate into our curriculum. Stuff like how to create a budget for your household.
Right.
How to balance a checkbook.
Yep.
How to open a checking account, how to, you know, a number of basics that.
Right.
As far as I could see from my two high school graduates, we're completely unwatched.
What's a 401K, what's, what, you know, yeah, all that stuff.
Yeah, why start an IRA?
I mean, I know I and my wife, we talk to our kids about those things, but there's a lot of parents that don't know that stuff.
How about if you give me, since there's some goals you're going to revisit, I did have a preliminary discussion with Rick Party. And I, I don't want to speak for him or his building leadership team, but I think this is a really good. You know, thing for the building to look at as far as exploring the feasibility of having some. Financial literacy course before graduation and. Let me see if that's something that he. Would like to pursue with his building leadership team to explore it and look at it. If not, then it's something that the central office administrative team could look at and. Come back, but I, I wouldn't, I, I feel it'd be amiss to not.
Make it a goal. I don't think, at this point, but I just wanted to throw that out.
The opportunity if that's something that his building leadership team is interested in, in looking at. If not, you know, we can certainly start to look at it from, you know, the administrative team. There, there are schools that do something and there are people that rotate through, like the banks offer free services that. You know, after the AP exams are done senior year, you've got about four or five weeks that. You could, if we got creative, we could give students a, a one week crash course on financial literacy before they graduate, but. Let me just talk to Rick about it first and, and I'll come back with what Rick says and then if he, if he doesn't feel he wants to take it on. This year, then we can take it on as far as exploring how other districts are doing it. And we can do it at central office and then take it from there.
That works. I'm a little leery about having bank people come in. They like to have issued credit cards and all this other stuff. They're, they're out to make money.
Right, that's true. That's true.
James, James has a question.
Well, I was commenting, I was just thinking about like the laws class that we have in middle school, like. I remember learning how to like use a checkbook and like I was wondering if like we could probably like. Go over like slightly, like how to do like your taxes and like what you guys were talking about earlier in, in that course. Along with like the checking, like I'm trying to understand like the checkbook and everything and then like offering a class, well. I don't know if like the home and economics class is one that teaches about that, but if they do. Like offer like a class like that, like such as an elective for students to learn from.
Okay, I wasn't thinking of an elective. I wanted it to be mandatory.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, mandatory would be a good idea.
And again, some schools are, are looking at that the end of the senior year where. You know, you've got some time to, AP exams are done, you know, you're not, you're a senior. You know, we all know what senioritis is, but that might be something that, you know, for two weeks in June. You, you have a course on financial literacy and I know there are models out there. So.
What you're suggesting.
I'm hearing not banks, but.
What you're suggesting is a good idea. I think it's an efficient use of time. If we can assume that seniors are paying attention. At that period of time, because I can remember hearing a number of discussions about senior skip day and. Senior class trip and I think by the time that rolls around, most, many seniors have taken their eye off the ball. And, and this is too important to, to do that way.
It is, but. I'll just go by what my children did. They had a class eight periods a day. So to, to get everything they wanted in so they could go to the college they wanted to go to. If you, if we say that's required, that means they don't get to take something. You know, there are, there are many children who have a full schedule right now.
I'm, I'm not thinking of even a half year. I don't think you need a half year or a full year. I think.
Talking about two weeks a week.
A unit of study, yeah, and you know, whether it's in January or September or at the end of the senior year. Is there a time in the senior year where a particular, a way we could rotate through the entire. Student body to make sure that every, everybody who.
That makes sense.
You know, you know, whether it's senior year math. What's the financial literacy curriculum for, you know? Well, let me give it, let me give Rick a shot at this first and then if he's not going to pick up the ball, then we will explore it. And come up and, and be able to report on how other schools are providing financial literacy. Prior to graduation. It is a common practice in many school districts right now. To ensure that all seniors walk out of there with final literacy, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think it's. I'd like to find out if, if Rick and his team want to explore it or if it's an Aviva Greer thing.
But from, from a goal standpoint, I mean, we could have a goal to say that we are going to have.
One way or the other.
We are going to have a financial literacy program.
Or.
Literacy.
Education, yeah.
Education.
Right, or, or.
We could have it in PE. Everybody.
So the point is, we want this to happen. I mean, this is really what. I mean, this is a big thing.
I'm not speaking for you.
This is what board goals are all about, is what do we want to do? We're not doing it, but we're setting the stage. We're, we're steering the ship. This is what we want done. So I think we can have a board goal that says that there will be.
A proposal for a financial literacy. A proposal for a financial literacy.
Right.
Unit for all seniors.
By June 1st.
Right, and I don't know if we can make it happen this year, but if we, if we have the proposal, then we can start, yeah, okay.
Just to expand on that, I think there's, there's one other open area in the same financial area. But the timeframe we're talking about wouldn't work. Many families and many students looking to go to college are faced with decisions about scholarships and schools and applications. And applicability of the scholarship. There's a lot of information. Out there that can be brought together to make, make it easier for them. What prompted me is the two articles I've seen in the paper this past week, one of which was the fact that the New York State average. Debt for graduating college students is gone up 100% in the last eight years. And an article that was online today, and I can't even remember who sent it out, pointing to the fact if you look at college scholarships. Many of the people that are sponsoring them are starting to consider removing their sponsorship. Because they're finding that the way the colleges are manipulating scholarship money have. Given them the benefit of providing incentives to middle class and upper class students to go to their school financially. At the same time, reducing their ability to support the economically. Deprived, not deprived, not the right word, those that are economically on the borderline or just below the borderline of being able to go to college. Because they don't have the, the financial aid available to them or understand the financial aid. One of the things they pointed out was if you look at the number of students, the graduating rate of students starting college. The numbers drop dramatically as you look at the economic situation of the students. In other words, one in 12. Or something like that, at the financially able to pay, drop out, whereas it gets down, you know, considerably. Less than that for the students to. Enter upon or embark upon a college education without understanding all the ramifications and planning and find out. As well as they're doing in college, they can't continue because they didn't know how to plan for it. They don't have the awareness of it. They don't have the money supporting it. You know, it's, it's, it's a very altruistic goal, but I think it's something that. Students deserve if we can provide for them.
Just wondering, I mean, that's, that's the objective of guidance, right?
Well, and it's also the whole premise of the Avid program that we have in. Is, is precisely that.
So, you know.
If we can, if we can assure ourselves that guidance is going to meet with every student. And the guidance is going to provide enough time in their schedule to provide this information and review it with the students, that's fine. But we need to, I, I think we need to assure, for us to say that's what we believe our students need, we'd like to provide it, we need to verify it's happening. If Greer wants to suggest that it's happening in guidance or you do, Doug, then we need to determine that and guarantee it.
We also, the, the college nights and FAFSA nights that have been instituted in the last two years. Have filled the house, so we've increased the number of opportunities for parents to come in for that purpose. And I know Aviva wanted to say something.
I just that they do meet with every student and that, I was going to mention the nights that Greer mentioned and that that information is sent out in a variety of ways and. And, you know, up on the website constantly being reviewed, but also posted and students are tapped on the shoulder. Avid does, it's really part of the Avid curriculum to, to be writing, you know, applying for scholarships and things like that, so. Part of bringing Avid schoolwide is bringing some of those things schoolwide, so I think that's really part of the. Avid site teamwork and the work of guidance, so it's really, it's well underway.
But you know, I, I questioned whether or not issues are, are fully. Discussed and provide information to students saying, you know, a lot of them say, well, I've got a scholarship now, I'm go, I'm good. I've got money coming in. Do you have enough coming in? Is it going to work? Is it going to sustain you through the four years you're going to, you're not going to have to drop out because you can't this, you can't that? And there are other things to consider. There may be family obligations, you know, so. Would it work for you as long as you're willing to, to take your college education and stretch it out over six years? Because you've got other things you need to do and you can't, you can't fit a full college scholar, college program in, in nothing else, you know, those kinds of topics.
It's just, I've, I've gotten to observe a lot of the senior interviews of guidance as I'm observing guidance counselors and they're pretty in depth and pretty. Specific to that student and that's common, so they have, you know, at least a whole period one-on-one with the counselor.
One period with one student.
At least, yes.
Yeah, but I'm saying to, to expand upon that, I think we need. Four hours with 30 students, an environment different than a one-on-one. One-on-one is fine, but you know, you, one-on-one with the graduating class of what, 300? That, that's a fairly significant workload with everything else going on. I just wonder if we can accomplish more. By grouping them into classes and, and providing it.
But I think that's where we're doing other night sessions and.
Right.
I mean, it's out there. I mean, I, I appreciate the concern. It's like one of those things, you know, how much can you do and where, where is it, where is it appreciated or where is it acknowledged? Or understood?
As long as we're not taking it as an excuse for not doing it because we're doing something, but we're not doing enough.
No, I think we can honestly say that we have significantly increased. The information we're providing to parents in the last two years, we have significantly increased it and we were absolutely amazed. At the response, so sometimes we do things like every time we have a Common Core night, we get two or three parents and it's, it's not successful. Eric did a totally different community night and he got hundreds of parents. They added that FAFSA night. That new FAFSA night that they're doing in the high school, oh my goodness, it was packed.
That was huge. It was there.
So.
And I think the important thing you're saying there is it's the parents that are there.
Yes, and they came with their kids too.
When, when it's, when it's just the kids perhaps meeting with the guidance counselor. Probably isn't necessarily the most effective place to.
Yeah, so.
And the other thing I would suggest is if, if this, I understood this has been happening, do we track the families that came? And do we contact them three years later or four years later saying? Now that you've had the experience, were you able to take advantage of what the information was provided, utilize it? To be able to negotiate the things necessary to get your students into, into colleges like you anticipated? And have you found any holes or issues developing since then that weren't covered?
I can say that at Avid, that's part of how that works, that they track and take responsibility for not just getting into colleges, but. Completion and how many years do they complete and so that data is sort of automatic for Avid kids and so that is something, you know, I thought about that as well. We've been very focused on graduation rate and I, I think that's appropriate, but you know, it. Again, you know, with only so much, so many hours in the day and things to focus on, we've been focused on the kids we have now. But certainly that's something we could look at.
I mean, this is something I, I feel as, as long as I've been on the board, we've dealt with current issues and things necessary to get the kids out of the high school, but. There's been minimal follow-up. The, the kids that we've developed and sent out into the, into the college area, you know. It seems to be the end of it and sometimes, we've tried several things to track them, but you know.
Right, well, we've done surveys.
I know.
I would, I would, unless we're, we've got a goal out of this, I'd like to. I think this is a great discussion, but I didn't hear a goal in there.
I understand.
Okay, so I'd like to move on to the next item, if you don't mind.
It was a good 20 minutes.
Times three.
Well, sometimes things just need to be done.
We'll have to speed it up on the next one.
It didn't drag out though.
No, good productive, good productive.
Very little null time.
All right, so now we're up to calendar for board meetings. There's a couple of changes. That need to be made first. So the 11/17. That the high school and we're moving that to the 10th. At the district office.
Yeah, and, and our apologies, we, we had a very difficult calendar year and. Believe me, we'll have greater level of scrutiny next year. This, this really was a very difficult calendar year. And we have cleanup to do that we, we haven't encountered in, in a very long time, so. The, the board meeting is scheduled to be at the high school on the open house night. So we can't possibly have a board meeting at the high school while open house is going on for.
Parent teacher conferences.
Is it parent teacher, sorry, sorry, tonight's open house. You know, my kid's out of high school for, I don't know, he's 33, so I can, I don't need to keep track of which one is which anymore. So the proposal is to, we have one meeting in November. It's scheduled for the 17th. The proposal is to move the November meeting up by one week. I know I won't be there. I haven't even had a chance to talk to Aviva, but are you here on the 10th? Because once the calendar was set, I make plans and most of my plans are flexible, not that one. So we're proposing that the November 17th meeting be moved up a week. And we'll widely publicize everything and, and of course, and we have it at the district office.
When would the meeting at FDR be rescheduled then?
Then the meeting at FDR would be.
12/8.
Oh, Deb, that's a typo, yeah, December 8th. Because the December 8th meeting was scheduled for Havland and that's.
Concert.
Concert, so now that we couldn't, but it just makes it difficult, so then we would keep the December 8th meeting. On December 8th, we would just relocate it from Havland to the high school. Judging by the crowds, I think people will find it difficult to find us, but.
And when would we meet at Havland then?
On February 9th. So I guess the biggest would be to have, find out from board members if you could meet a week earlier. If not, you can keep the board meeting on the 17th, but just move it to district office. So we actually don't need to change the November. So, we actually don't need to change the November board meeting. We, we would definitely need to relocate it, knowing that Denise already had a, a conflict with parent teacher night, I'm, I'm sure she would be.
Happy.
What?
She'd be happy to change it.
I would, too, because I.
Yeah, you're in the same boat, yeah. So if, if all board members have the ability to let us know now that they could be here for the board meeting, Aviva can.
I can be there.
Sit in my shoes. Enough advance warning, I think.
Okay.
I don't see a reason we couldn't do it.
All right.
Jeff, you're good?
Yep.
All right, that's good. All right, is any, are there any other adjustments? Anybody see anything else that might conflict?
Those are, the next two are change in location, not in date.
Right. Mm-hmm.
And you'll update the.
Right.
The only thing we can't update is the physical printed calendar that already went out.
Yeah, it's always a problem.
But, we'll put it up on the signs, we can, you know, send it out via email, through school messenger, not a phone call, not a robo-call, but, you know, school messenger, post it on the signs out front, and change it on the electronic versions.
I think we need.
Right, yeah, it's on the, it's on the homepage, so.
We, we need a motion to make that change. Are we going to put it on the next agenda, or?
I was going to put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
All right, so we can be done with that? That's good.
Done with you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Brings us, once I get down there, to special ed. Our motion for special education placements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that, Dan?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend its adoption as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Opposed?
Thank you. I have a motion for the first reading of policies 86-35. 86-35 are the regulation, 45-26 and 45-26 are the regulations. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? You've all read them, I hope, and all in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Now, one, I know the question's a little bit late, but we still have the second reading. This only applies to information that's fully under our control. So it doesn't apply to information that would be held in state databases about our students or other ways that our information might be held or taken by other legal parties. In other words, we don't control the information once it's beyond our grasp.
That is correct. Okay. I have a motion for 10.3 memorandum of understanding with the Hyde Park Teachers Association.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah. Did we have a surge of cross-country team members that we need an assistant coach?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We have 50 on the high school team and 30 on the modified team, so we have 80 students running around in the woods with two adults. And it's, it was an increase, you know, with the growth of the program, where there's a growth in interest of the students, it's, it's one of those sports where, you know, it's hard to say no to students, and, you know, they don't need to be cut, and, yeah, and I, and, yeah.
The word, the word on the street that I'm getting is some great coaching, you know, that, that it's really a result of, of some good coaching that this program is providing.
Right.
And that's coming from coaches in other districts.
Yeah.
So, I was talking to James down here, just to let you know, the very first meet, Coach Holling couldn't make it, so they didn't have a coach. The middle school coach had to be the coach with that big a team.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a safety issue, that's for sure.
Sure.
And a coaching issue. Because when you're spread that thin, how, how, how much instruction can you actually be given?
Okay.
How'd you do?
Um, we did good. I think we came in fourth.
Great.
Overall, there were really good teams over there, so it was good to compete with them.
Great.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
It's certainly not a program you jump into in one year, developing that kind of stamina and skills.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something you do, and do in preparation for it, but if you're not on a team like that.
Yeah, it takes a while.
But it's something that you can do for a lifetime.
Yes, yeah.
I'd like to spend my life running through the woods with girls.
I have a, I have a motion for 10.4 staffing agreement with unlimited care.
As my son said when he took it up.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, is this coming, this is coming back around from the last time, right? Is this the second, or did, did we not? Didn't we see a nursing agreement on a prior?
Yeah, I think that was for a different student, and this is mostly for one student who needs nursing care during the school day. And then there are some nursing services for another medically fragile student. So this is different than the other one.
I guess I'm a little surprised that we've got a per student, or that we're handling this on a per student basis. I would, I would think that we would have a, an umbrella agreement with, I guess this is unlimited care, that when we need them for a student, we've got a, a set rate, and we just schedule personnel. Is there a reason why we're doing this on a per student?
Wouldn't they have staffing problems, though? If, if it's an open-ended thing, they wouldn't know.
Although it's a contract, generally what it is, is a nurse who is interviewed, and it is that nurse who's with that student. And it hasn't been easy to find an agency that has available excellent people. So in this case, we managed to do that, but, and, and the needs of the students are different. One is in a school setting, one is in a home setting.
Okay, so it's a very personalized nurse.
Yeah, and we only have two students who need that kind of care in the district, and then another student who needs part-time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Wow, brings us to public participation. I have a motion for public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Anybody want to talk? Kevin, you want to get another shot here? You're over, okay. All right, may I have a motion to close public participation, please?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? There are no other matters deemed necessary at this time by the board. Board subcommittee meetings? I haven't got any.
Technology Subcommittee met. That was a rousing Subcommittee meeting, if there is such a thing. A lot of enthusiasm over the fact that we have Chromebooks in HMS, and they were, at that time, just getting ready to start passing them out. So, I think the, what I got from it was that the staff was really enthusiastic, there's a lot of anticipation.
Good.
So, the other thing that came up that was apropos to our goals discussion was that we also talked about there, the ability to track the impact and the effects of the technology. So we were talking about putting together a, a matrix, just to, to say, this is how many, this is, how many's gotten broken, how many, you know, have been lost. Here's, here's the action and, and changes that the teachers are making, here's what we're, you know, the early symptoms of success or change in student behavior, so. And we're, we had Mr. Partey there as well, and we're starting to talk about introduction into the high school. So.
Okay, great.
Lot going on.
Any other, did you do the?
There was an energy Subcommittee meeting, of which we reviewed, we got a briefing on the report that will be coming to the board next month, I believe.
Think so.
Yeah. And there was also a, a good discussion about what the purpose of the committee was, and what is appropriate for the committee to work on, and, you know, I think kind of a rejuvenation, a time to, to relook at the committee, and what initiatives it can, it can look at.
Did Dutch County School Board thing?
Yeah, on the same night that we had.
Oh, that's right, that's right, we couldn't go.
Yes.
That's right, okay.
But there was, yeah, I don't remember anything off the minutes, I did read the minutes, but.
Yeah. I kind of looked at them.
Perry sent us clone.
Hmm?
So Perry sent us clone.
Yes.
All right.
The special ed Subcommittee did meet this week, and we were presented, Heather went through the opening meeting that the, the special ed presented, and she said it was well-received, a lot of people there, including regular teachers at the presentation. He said it beginning to get a lot more understanding of the interaction with the co-teaching and stuff like that. It was, it was a very nice presentation, and lighting to us. And at my request, it was expanded to a dual meeting, and not only included special ed, but we also met with, regarding the ENL program. I had requested, saying we got two special groups of students that we deal with, the students coming in with special needs and special requirements, and adjusting their schedules, and, and what's provided to them. And the same is true of the English New Language students coming in, you know, how did it work, have we seen, you know? And surprisingly, we're finding that we're running into some of the same situations, in that special ed has always had a history of, you know, of one or two students showing up at the last minute, just moving into the district, and all of the quick adjustments that needed to be made, and well, turns out that the same thing is true in the ENL program. You get a couple of students here that come in the first day of school, almost, you know, and, and communication issues, obviously, with the English as a new language maybe leading to these issues of, of students showing up the day of, and requiring some quick reaction on, on programs for them. So it was a good, it was a good meeting. It was nice to see we, we handled the, the concerns that came up, that there were there at the last minute, and we're off to a good start.
Okay.
And she did, she did share that she, the number of ENL students is increasing. So, she was going to come back later with more data on that.
Also, with the new regulations, that even when students pass the state exam, they still receive services for two years. So that was a new regulation in July. So we may not have as many, you know, we may not have a lot more new families coming in, but they don't test out, or when they do test out, they're still in program. So we have many more students that were serving as a result. Because they used to test out and be done with services.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the, the, something I, I wasn't aware of, but, you know, the, one of the, the concerns was the fact that they have, they had a family coming in, they had filled out their applications and stuff for the school, and the indication was that the children spoke English. The issue was that they're from the Caribbean, and they speak a dialect of English, actually, and the experience of the teachers immediately was the fact, as far as an educational environment that we provide, these students are not proficient in reading or writing English as it's used in the classroom, and will require, or should be getting services to, to bring them up to a position where they can be successful in the classroom. But in this particular case, there is a question amongst the identifying and convincing that they do need services. There are some social issues beyond the ones we normally experience that have to be dealt with.
Okay.
And the coherence planning of the, the teachers and the administrators met, was only there for an hour, but I will say they were quite busy in that one hour that I was there. So, maybe Aviva could share a little more, but they were quite active.
I can, if you like. It was a really great day. I mean, Greer had arranged for Jonathan's, Jonathan Costa's organization to have some of the trainers come and work with us. So it was really a training, as much as, as a, a meeting. And they really brought some of those big ideas that are so inspiring to us, that Jonathan brought to us, to a very concrete classroom level. So I think that was really great for us to work with that, and, and to get some ideas, and it was really about how they use the critical thinking rubric in Connecticut, and they were showing us how they went through the process of making that the teacher goals. So that having the, really their evaluation be based on goals that are connected to critical thinking, which in Connecticut you can do. So it's something that, you know, perhaps we'll have that, that leeway in the future, but, but just ways to have it really be like we were talking about, you know, all tied, that your goals match our goals, and, and really center on student learning goals, and that everything we do is around that. So it was, it was a really good day.
Doesn't hurt.
From New York State.
But we were adding this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Upcoming meetings. Tuesday, September 27th, is a financial aid night at FDR High School, and that starts at 6:30 PM.
Get there early if you want a seat.
That's, that's the FAFSA night.
That's the, one of the FAFSA nights, yes.
Yeah.
Because the FAFSA is required much earlier this year.
Yeah.
Okay. Wednesday, September 28th, at 6:30, is the DLT facilities meeting here at the administration office. Thursday, the 29th, at 5:30, is the audit committee meeting here in the district office. Monday and Tuesday are no evening events, that would be August, October 3rd and 4th, no evening events in recognition of Rosh Hashanah. Friday, October 7th, K-12 early release for superintendent's conference day. And Monday, October 17th, which is a change, please note, at 7:00 PM is the Board of Education meeting. It was changed from the 13th to the 17th, so that we could go, all go and.
Hooten alle for Kevin.
Clap for Heron, and for Kevin, yeah.
And Heather, and Donna all.
Okay. There's no need for an executive, another executive session?
Sure.
We can have one? Oh, okay. Well then, would you like to adjourn the meeting, then?
I would like to adjourn. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Danger.